All set. Sorry for the delay, we have to do an update. We will call this meeting of the Buckfield Select Board to order for September third, twenty twenty four at six thirty eight P M. And you have a quorum. Old business, Darnett Road and Perkis Road culvert bids. We opened those the last meeting. Give us a chance to look them over. Do uh, do all these include paving?
Uh, generous and generous and Pratt and Sons.
Yes, Sandra.
And. Want to make sure I remember correctly that that was. An important part of the. Bid request was the paving. Like that we were looking for something that was all inclusive.
The RFP was to remove the culvert, excavate the site and return it back to what it was prior to.
Which would include paving, okay, thank you. My memory will see.
And then was the proof of insurance fax over from D and D?
Uh, no, I didn't see it coming. Typically on some of these will happen, it's always, once we accept a bid. That'll be the first request and then they'll send that right over.
I will make a motion that we accept the bid from Pratt and Sons General Contractors for the Kirkus Road Culvert Replace- Replacement. At a lump sum price of twenty three thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars for either the forty eight inch or the sixty inch. Size.
Any further discussion?
There's includes paving, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Just as NIMBY.
All right, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, bye bye.
Azalea, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Thank you.
Yes. And.
And may I just. To people who are listening in, um. They say here that they are available to perform this work anytime this season, how many anticipate three days to complete the project?
Wow.
So. People out there in TV land. Know the parameters?
That was on the Perkis Road. So now the Darnett Road.
I will make a motion that we accept Pratt and Sons General Contractors bid for work on the Darnett Road Culvert Replacement at. Twenty four thousand two hundred dollars for the forty eight inch culvert and twenty seven thousand two hundred dollars for the sixty inch culvert replacement.
Any further discussion? Yes.
Making the decision between the forty eight inch culvert, sixty inch culvert is that?
So, so the sixty inch culvert is considered with the FEMA process that we're going with, would be considered mitigation, would be upsizing the culvert to. Deal with increased rainwater. It was something I included in there. Just to, um, not more of an increase, it would be, um. Based on the, the figures that FEMA gave us, um. That would be within what would be allowable for mitigation, so if you had wanted to upsize it. You could bid on a higher price. If you wanted to, and that rose, the cover sits low, so there's like, it wouldn't fill the road up. Like Perkins would if we wanted the bigger one.
It's okay.
It's a fourteen foot wide stream, by the way.
Given that information, I don't see any reason not to go.
Yeah. The larger.
I agree, I will amend my motion to accept the bid for the sixty inch culvert replacement at twenty seven thousand two hundred dollars.
I was second that. Thank you. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, bye bye.
Say hi.
You're on.
Sandra, hi.
There we go.
And they anticipate three days for this project as well, so it would be three days for each.
Yeah, that's great. All right, new business, the consent agenda. A few reports.
I'll make a motion that we start up the consent agenda, a second.
Further discussion as we look through the reports? Four hundred visitors at the library. In August.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it is.
We were doing their. Reading program. Previous case.
Yes, you want some kids to participate, was it saying here on the ice cream?
Well, it's all.
There was a lot of ice cream eaten. That's a good comedy.
Yeah, that is fantastic. Really rescued and steady.
Look at that mutual aid.
Yeah, that's usually how it goes.
Pretty.
Yeah.
He provided one, they provided one.
Nice to see an even tally at least.
You got a new parameter?
Yes, congratulations, Cameron, hand on Limerick.
Yes.
So Cameron, maybe you could. Clarify, I've had some people ask me about Trump or Treat. If they have questions, who should they contact or should they wait? Until.
They should reach out to the Buckville Community Events Committee at. BuckvilleCommunityEvents@gmail.com. They're planning it forward. And they do have a meeting next Monday at six thirty, I believe.
Okay, so it's community. Fantastic, thank you.
All right, any further discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor, bye bye.
Azalea, I.
You're on.
Sandra, I.
Thank you, town manager update.
So I didn't have time to write up her report, so I posted notes. The thirty day, thirty to forty five day notices for liens went out, um, thirty, thirty days ago. Uh, we'll be filing those unpaid tax liens, uh, with county this week. Um, I did reach out to KRT, because as you know, the. The vendor that you all signed, it said that the deliverables would be. Turned in on the thirtieth and. It's now the third, so I, I reached out to Ken today, I haven't heard back from him, um, once I have more information there, I'll let you know about that. Once I have that information. And I have access to the database. At that point, residents should be able to request their tax cards, we'll be able to print out here. Community Day. Seemed to be a success, there was a lot of people from what I saw. Um, I wasn't able to go because I had other plans, but I did do a drive by and I saw all the people there for the parade, so I want to thank the Community Events Committee for putting that back together, I think a lot of people enjoyed it. I received an email from Ron at R H R Smith, they want to schedule another, uh, couple of days to come in and wrap up everything on those audits we talked about, so I gave him some days today and. Um, that should be taking place in the next three weeks and then the paving on. North Buckfield Road and. Paris Hill Road will begin at the end of September, beginning of October, I know I received a lot of complaints about the culverts, um. But. They had to come out, they were bad, they're failing, they need to be done, I want to do it before. Uh, paving begins, so, um, our two guys are working as hard as they can to do, to keep up with everything that's going on, um, a lot of focus is up on those areas because of the paving projects. Uh, so. Try to bear with us as we deal with being short staffed and. Have what we can. Handle.
Yes, Sandra.
So are we currently hiring or?
I do have a job posting for a C D L driver. I received, last I checked, there were see ten applications, we reached out to all ten of them and get a single callback. Um, I'm hiring a temporary person to help finish out the mowing season and. Flagging and what other, other, other projects we have, which could spill over into the winter for shoveling or plowing parking lots with the smaller trucks. So I definitely am looking for people, and it is posted, it's on the need. We've got it on the website. So. If anybody knows anybody that wants to.
Do some work, I'm looking.
One other question. Um. Will you please post it on the town website when? The, um. Cards are available, people have been asking me and I've said that when they're available, they'll be. Can't come in to pick up a card? A card, we can mail it to them, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So once they're available. Should people call before they come in, so we can have it ready or just come in and they can print it out?
Well, since we're going to be learning a new system, I would ask them to call, call in advance, uh, but when I post it on Facebook, it'll pop up on the website, so. They'll see that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and a big thank you to the Community Events Committee for the Community Day, it was a nice article, paper. Yeah.
Sunny, great, it was great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, it's nice to see everyone lined up on the road again, seemed like people had a really good time and the turnout looked awesome, so many cool vendors at the festival. Very nice job, guys, that was awesome.
Good food.
Crazy, yeah, dinner, local crap, there was discussion, serious talent around here.
All right, approval of the minutes from the August twentieth, twenty twenty four meeting.
And that we approve the minutes of the August twenty, twenty, twenty.
Now, second that. Any discussion?
I just had a couple of questions, um, reading through them. Under number two, property valuation and taxation under conclusions, um. My first question was under seventeen, it says residents can call the office to discuss reassessment requests. Um, I was under the impression that they should call K R T to request that, but should they be going through the office now or?
So at the time it was to call K R T, but now everything is done, it shouldn't be delivering, so at this point, they're going to be dealing with.
Okay, thank you. Perfect, and then another, another couple of questions, I was just wondering, um, where people and when they could find, uh, under four, a concrete metric of. Uh, market driven. Sales, um, and the, the manual under number twelve. Will be available to the public and answers most questions about the resolution problems, I was just wondering where they can find that information or when it's expected. Do we?
So, um, they discussed it in the last meeting, the manual is part of their deliverables and is what is delivered to the town once we have everything, essentially, it's the. Instruction manual, the methodology of how the assessments were concluded, um, we'll have that once they deliver it to us.
In charge, could we scan up, put it online, so people could access it there rather than.
I don't want to say yes until I see how big it is or how it's put together.
But we can look into that, because that may be easier than making copies to give to.
And then your other. Question was.
Uh, number four, the adjustments are market driven by sales in Buckfield and a concrete metric will be available to taxpayers.
So yeah, that'll be, that'll be in the manual, um, and the, the market driven, the, the sales portion of it's already posted on KRT's website, that's kind of available. That's how they came up for those sixty six sale.
Perfect, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes, bye bye.
I wasn't there.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Thank you.
Who's the second?
Bob seconded.
I seconded, yeah. All right, reschedule the November fifth Select Board Meeting since it's election day.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I don't think it's a good, good idea to have.
We usually do that.
We also discussed, so. Brittany's been working with elections, because some of the, the, the stuff that needs to be done, sometimes when she gets pulled out of the room is distracting and we talked about closing the office, but I think what I'm doing is just having to throw them all day long and then, um. Myself and. Alyssa will stay over in the office and handle stuff, I, I hate to close on a Tuesday, because it's the one late night that we have, so. I'll stay open. Then this, if it's low, we'll, we'll keep it that way, but if it gets. To be too much, just because of what's going on, I, I anticipate it's going to be a big election, I mean, it's November, it's presidential election, I. I, I anticipate there'll be nine hundred to a thousand people that will actually show up, so.
Talk to us a little bit about absentee ballots for those people who may not know the process.
Yep, they can currently call and request about, they can come in and fill out an application. They can fill out an application on the state's website to request it, we'll receive it, we're not sending any out, but in October, when it's time to send them out. Um, people can start requesting them now in any of those three methods, and once they're available, we will mail them along. Or they can be picked up.
So they can start the request process now?
Yeah.
And then once they're available to be mailed out, they will be.
Correct.
Mailed out, and what is the latest? You can request an absentee ballot?
I don't know that right off the top of my head, usually typically it's the Friday or the Thursday before the election. Because it, the time it takes to mail things out.
Right, and it's their responsibility to make sure it's sent back. Thank you.
And you can find more information on that, um, if you just Google State of Maine Online Absentee Ballot Request. There should be a main.gov page that pops up and will give you. Plethora of information process and. Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, it's got everything right there. So lots of questions, you can check the status of your absentee ballot, you can request it right there. And yeah, it'll just be routed back to us so we can fulfill your request.
When would you like to move it to?
Well, that's the thing, right, so, uh, the twenty first is Thanksgiving, right? Which should also be a meeting week. Said correct?
We're looking.
Or is it the following week?
Is it the? Didn't be the.
From the.
Twenty eighth?
Yeah, no, the Thanksgiving's on the twenty eighth this year, which on Thursday. It's September, all good on Thanksgiving, we.
I'm way off, I'm not even close to the right much. Just push it out a week.
Yeah, the twelfth. Twelfth and the nineteenth will be our meeting dates.
Yeah.
Ooh, I wouldn't go on that, actually, oh. What about another week really, because there's, that would be four weeks before we have a select board meeting, because there's.
Oh.
Five Tuesdays in October.
Do it on twenty ninth?
Yeah.
That'll be the, yeah.
That would work for me for myself, it'll work for you.
October.
October, yes.
So we would have three in October.
I will make a motion that we reschedule the November fifth, twenty twenty four Select Board Meeting to October twenty ninth.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, bye bye.
Azalea, I.
You're on.
Sandra, I.
I have to keep up my schedule or I'll show up, all right.
We just have the, the November one off, uh, we're basically, we're basically pushing that week, that three week gap off. By one meeting, so we'll have it when we create them up three week gap.
All right, resident complaints, junkyards and public health issues. There certainly. Been some complaints.
Yes, there has, and it's been ongoing for a while, um. There seems to be. A lot more. Junkyard, I don't see junkyards, but what some would define as junkyards popping up around town. Um, which is also leading into further issues with. Public health, um, and. At some point, I. Think the town's going to have to start looking at what we can do to try to get people to clean up some of this stuff, because it's, it's.
Uncontrollable.
It's not even just like junkyards, some of it is just. Crap trash, right, there's a difference between scrap metal, trash, right? And it's difficult because in, our transfer station, I mean, we're only open two days a week, but you can pretty much get rid of anything. And, um, you know, if, if people are struggling to get rid of some of their stuff, maybe. There are things that neighbors or the community can do to help them, but. I think it, I mean, we've, code enforcement's had to go out and speak to a few property owners, um. There's other stuff from the local health officer that unfortunately Bob's probably going to have to deal with here soon. And it's just, I just wanted to bring awareness to all of you, because I mean, it's, it's probably. Three to four complaints a week and it's consistently about, I'd say the same. Five or six properties. And. Neighbors are, have been patient, but they're starting to get frustrated and. At some point, if the statute says we have to do something about it, we need to do something about it.
Agreed. Yes, Sandra.
So I think we. Perhaps of all. Uh, community members come and speak to us. About. Different sites in town, um, I did some research. Um. At the state of Maine level. And, uh, it. What's considered an automobile graveyard or a junkyard is pretty clearly defined. And. It's also, um. Required by the state. That if you are going to have a. Automobile graveyard or junkyard, you need to have the appropriate permits. From the town. And it would appear. To me that there are. Some locations in town that. By first blush anyway. Fall under the definition of a junkyard. Uh, so that's in no way a judgment. Um, it's just is what it is. So. If there is. A location that meets this definition. Is my question, Cameron, is. Who would be the person? To. Let. The owner of. That location know. That they need to fill out. An application for a permit. To continue to do. Whatever it is they're doing.
It would be code enforcement, it can still.
Okay. Is that something as a select board? We identify, is that something that we?
So unactively, as complaints come in, I'm actively reaching out to Kingston, Kingston's visiting properties and speaking to property owners.
Yes.
He's asked a couple of property owners or. Not just on the junkyard aspect of it, but, uh. Property line. Setbacks, uh, and he's issued warnings, not warnings, but he's. Given them a certain amount of time to remove something that's not supposed to be there, uh. He has gone and asked people to clean up their vehicles, given them a set amount of time to do that. But. And he also visited another property and I do believe he brought the application and gave it to them and said that if you're going to continue this, you need to. Apply for it and hire someone, so, um, at some point, I don't know how far Kingston can go, we're still need to discuss it with him before. We have to reach out to the town's attorney. And take further action, but it seems like it's getting to the point where that's not going to be avoidable. In the near future, because things aren't getting better, they're getting worse.
So I think it's important for the community to know that. This process. Can take much longer than we would want it to. But. For some of those places in town. The process is, has begun. Um. And. That. We've notified the people that need to be notified. Paperwork that needs to be served and. That we've communicated with the town attorney is to how we move forward and we're aware of how we move forward, I don't want people to think that. They call with a concern and it's just swept under the rug, but. It takes a while. Would that be an accurate assessment?
We're relying on state statute, not local ordinance, I mean, they tried passing a junkyard ordinance years ago and it failed, so in the absence of a junkyard ordinance, we only have a state statute to lean on, so there's only certain things that we can do. You know, it has to be a certain criteria, but. I did meet with the town's attorney, the new town's attorney last weekend. We discussed it briefly and he told me what. He likes to see before he takes any action, so I got relayed information to Kingston and. Kind of come up with a game plan that, you know. If these things aren't getting better, people aren't taking the initiative to pick up. Or rectify the situation, then.
Or get appropriate permits.
Or get, great, uh, then. That will be the next step.
Thank you. Do you have it in front of you, can you share like what? The state says qualifies it as a junkyard? There's one piece, junkyard means a yard, field or. Other outside area used to store, dismantle or otherwise handle. A discarded, worn out or junked plumbing, heating supplies, electronic or industrial equipment, household appliances for furniture. B discarded scrap and junk lumber and C. Old or scrap copper, brass, rope, rags, batteries, paper, trash, rubber debris. Waste and all scrap iron, steel and other scrap ferrous or non-ferrous material. Then an area used for temporary storage of vehicles by any establishment or place of business that is primarily engaged a business as an insurance salvage pool, this goes on, I think it's more about. Vehicles, um. I also looked into some things if. If you. Make money from junking or scrapping, as long as it's a hobby. Um, you don't need. To report that. Um, so that would be. Between an individual and their accountant, whether or not it's a hobby, I guess. So as far as any business. Licensing. Um, but if. If the junking or scrapping is an individual's primary income. Then. It needs to be registered as a business and I didn't look into that too much about what needs to be done, um. But whether or not something is your primary. Form of income or a hobby.
We're taking a state, a state permit or a state license, they first need to give. We're taking a state, a state permit or a state license, they first need to give local approval. Um, that issue not that point. I can't remember what, I mean, we we have a lot of town that do provide their applications and, you know. Certain setbacks, distances from the interstate, the road, um, you know, those things. I believe are all in statute as well.
Hmm.
Not the specific definition, but um, proponent is, yeah.
There's that difference between having a junkyard. And running a business out of that junkyard. By selling the scrapping. So even if you don't do anything with. Your junkyard for a business, let's say you just want to have one. Um, you do need a permit. And if you don't get a permit. It could lead to a lawsuit. No, it is, no. So if anybody has any questions as to whether or not. They have a junkyard. Um, they could certainly look this up online or come see me, I'll give you a copy.
Good email Kingston, that's E O at town at buffield dot org.
Um, so there are plenty of resources out there and if you do have a junkyard and didn't realize that you needed to get a permit. We are happy to help you do that.
Yeah, if you let me know, I'm happy to go out with Kingston as well. I mean. I would expect like some health risk or environmental concerns around. Let's say, for instance, rotting cars that have oil and fuel in them. That could be an issue, especially if it's near drinking water.
Hmm, yes, that's in the statutes as well.
I thought perhaps.
Yeah.
So yeah, if he needs a hand, I'm certainly willing to go along.
Hmm. I'm thinking also if there is somebody who has things that. Need to be disposed of and they feel that they have no way.
Hmm.
To get those items to the transfer station. Would we agree that they, those individuals could reach out to any one of us and it's not a town responsibility? But as a community, I'm sure there are people. Who would help out and so. If you need help getting items. To the transfer station, reach out and uh, we said we can do to help you out.
Right, yeah, absolutely. And odds are some of them exist because someone is not physically able to clean up this sort of stuff, so. We want, we wanna help. We don't wanna, we're not on the defensive, we're not trying to attack, we. Wanna help the town and we wanna help you.
Yep. Perfect, alright, thank you. Other business, public comment period? Unless we have the other, I'm sorry, we have any other other business? Before we move on to public comment, no? Okay, public comment?
And then Judy has something.
Yes, Judy.
Get on, remember.
Oh, you're muted.
Can't hear you.
Okay, got it.
Got it.
I always have a comment. I just want to. Thanks. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes.
I would like to thank Selectman Azalea Cormier for. That lovely poster she put up regarding the old church at the Buckfield Community Days. I don't know how many people saw it because it was. It it was at not a very well attended table, but I was awfully glad it was there. I hope some people saw it, maybe they'll react. But I do want to say to you. We we ignore the old church on the hill. I just worry that a windstorm could come along someday. And do in that steeple if we don't do something. So just. Don't, don't put it too much on a back burner because it's already been quite a while. Thanks.
As it happens, I got a text with that very poster. And that person will be joining the committee, I believe.
Terrific.
Thank you. We put the old church on the agenda for one of the upcoming meetings. Hmm.
Sure.
Know what the schedule looks like. We don't know if it's best for the next one or the meeting after that. Yeah. So if we will put the old church on the hill, on the agenda for the next meeting, we'll publicize that. Hopefully people will attend.
Yeah.
And.
Yep.
Fantastic. Thank you, Senator. No problem. Glad you liked it, Judy.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
Any other public comment or other business? Alright, we are gonna have executive session thing, correct?
Yes.
Alright, when I put the right statute and everything right here. Did, thank you. So I'll make a motion, we move into executive session pursuant to one M R S A subsection four oh five six F. Um.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor? Bye bye.
Azalea, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
So we'll go into executive, then come out and close the meeting if anybody wants to stick around.
All right, we're out of executive session. We were discussing paperwork surrounding abatements and get some clarification on that.
Seven fifty five.
Oh yes, it's seven fifty five, thank you. Any further discussion for the evening? All right, then I'll make a motion that we adjourn at seven fifty five.
One second.
Hall of favor.
Aye.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.